Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a special meeting of the City Council of City Pearland for January the 22nd, 2018. New business, Executive Session, under Texas Government Code, Section 5501.074, Personnel Matters, Regarding Appointments to City's Boards and Commissions. And we'll have new business after we come back in. This time, we will recess into Executive Session at 5:21. The councilor returned from Executive Session at 6:40. Moving to our new business, part of our agenda, Consideration Possible Action Regarding Appointments to the Boards and Commissions. The council will take no action on these items tonight, and we will have a report to each individual as we -- in a few days. And I want to thank all of the applicants for spending some time with us, and thank you very much. Moving to item number three. We adjourn this meeting at 6:41.
Okay, good. You know, it's always a pleasure to ask to have an opportunity to recognize special events going on in the community, special organizations, and also special individuals. And we do have tonight a very special individual that we would like to recognize, and I'd like to ask you to step up here. Somebody made an appointment, but he's on the side of his face, and says, "Mr. Data." (laughter) I just had a proclamation to you, and it's a very attractive one. It's suitable for framing. We just have not framed it yet, so we'll find one here later for you. If you don't get long, you can wait there.
So let me talk or tell you about this. I mean, when you have an individual that has spent so much time with our city, and has done such an excellent job, and is recognized for the work he does, and he's the guy that it's hard to find someone that disagrees with him. He stands a little taller than most of us, but that's good. Let me present this to you. Whereas Butch was born in Houston, Texas, moved to Pearland in 1967. (inaudible) Whereas Butch has been faithful and happily married to his wife Judy for 40 years. Whereas Butch and Judy have lovingly parented one son named John. Is John here tonight? John, thank you, big. Come on up here. I didn't know what's gonna -- are you as tall as he is, aren't you? Good. Whereas Butch started his employment with City of Pearland on February 7th, 1975, and retired from the city on December 29th, 2017. Whereas Butch has provided honest, dedicated service to the City of Pearland and the citizens of Pearland for over 42 years, nine months, and 22 days.[202.84][202.84](laughter) What's -- what held you up? Whereas Butch has worked in almost every department of the city, excluding the police department, holding many positions, including but not limited to solid waste truck driver, water waste crew member, volunteer fire department man, and construction engineer and inspector. Therefore, I, Tom Reed, by the power of vest and me, as the mayor of the fine City of Pearland, Texas, do hereby proclaim January the 22nd today, 2018, as Butch Hail Day in Pearland, and ask one and all to join with me in recognizing and commending him for his dedicated service to the City of Pearland. And it was a great deal of pleasure that I did present this to you and sign it by Tom Reed, Mayor of the City of Pearland. So if anything goes wrong with the proclamation, you have me to blame for it. So, but I thank you very much, and we have three fine gentlemen up here, and you're -- let's start at the level up here. We'll get some more people up here.
Yeah, we'd like Judy to come on up, too.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Mayor. Very much. What we have here is, we did this for a going away present for Butch, is that we put together a map. The GIS Department did a fabulous job, and many of us had the opportunity to sign it at a going away party. And what we did is, we put forth what the city limits were in 1975, when Butch started, and that's on the top. And then on the bottom is where the city limits are today, when Butch retired. And so you can see the dramatic change, going from a population of around 9,000, almost 10,000 people, to a population now of 120,000, and a square mile increase from about 15 and a half square miles, was the City of Pearland back then, to now we're pushing almost 52 square miles. So dramatic change. Butch was a phenomenal employee, been with us for this long. His handprints are everywhere in the city. So again, thank you so much for your years of service. This is just a little bit of what we can do for you.[324.83][324.83](applause)
Can we get a picture of you if this was the location?
(inaudible)
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, well, she's -- she hadn't put me to work too hard yet.[336.13][336.13](laughter)
You get long, and you come back.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
I mean, I will do. (inaudible)
I can update a little bit if we sit in December, so it's easier.
I think the public sector is a little bit in that.
Yeah, I didn't make it for definitely.
Yeah, that's -- I think it's always good for us to recognize people who do work good work, not only for the city, but for any organization that supports the citizens in our community, state, and nation. But it is now time for us to move into another area of our business for tonight. Let me open a regular meeting of the City Council of City of Pearland for Monday, January the 22nd, year 2018.
If you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation, and our police chief, Johnny Spire, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we're gathered here tonight in your memory and in your sake, and ask that you be with us throughout the meeting that we're about to proceed on, and thank you for the work that you have done in guiding us over the past years. We are delighted to be amongst citizens in our community, that we lift up those who are the first responders, and the people who have helped out during the recent tragedies that we've had. We've had several, parking, and a little snow and ice that was rather unusual for all of us. But I ask that you lay your hand on the head of each one of those, and bless them for the duties and contributions they have made to our citizens in our community. We ask that you be with those individuals who are both civilian and military overseas in harm's way, may they return safe and sound and soon. And as you go through the process of watching over us, we ask that you will be with us tonight as we conduct the business of our city. We access your name and for your sake, I'm here.
(inaudible)
Could we place the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Texas pledge?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Thank all of you for being here tonight, and it's not freezing outside, and it's not freezing inside, either. Next item on our agenda is, after the call of order, is a roll call, and we do have all of our council members present tonight, which we are delighted to have. Item number four on our agenda is citizen comments. Do we have citizens that are -- which speaker, Louis, the -- would you call those up, council member?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jared Hostetler?
Thank you for being here tonight, Jared. And I think you spoke before, if you could just give your name and address, and then also limit your comments to three minutes.
You bet.
Thank you.
My name's Jared Hostetler. I live at 17410 County Road 127, Pearland, Texas, 77581. My home was recently annexed in the Ariella Annexation, and I come here again tonight, this is my third time here, to request that you guys deannex my home from the city. My home is one of the 10 homes located on the north side of the Ariella Annexation. Nine of these other homes were removed from the annexation plan prior to being voted on by the City Council, so that makes my home the only home that was annexed on the north side of the airport. I feel that we were singled out. These nine other homes that are closer to the city than mine use the fire services, the emergency services, the roads, just as much as me and my family do. There's no reason we shouldn't receive the same fair and equal treatment that these people have. So once again, I request that you deannex my home from the city, and give me the same fair and equal treatment that you had given my nine neighbors. Thank you very much. God bless.
I appreciate your comments, and appreciate you being here tonight. Moving in our agenda, item number four is a public hearing, which we have tonight. Item number six is consent agenda. May I ask Councilmember Carbone to present our consent agenda for our consideration?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I believe we've got one item B to be removed from the consent agenda.
Item B, okay.
Yes. Consideration of possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through F, with the exception of B, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Construction is well underway at our new nature center, south side of Magnolia there, next to the recycling center. When we bid that out, we had included an alternate, which we did not at the time, award, and that's for a fire protection system, sprinkler system. We went through a couple iterations, trying to figure out exactly the requirements and how we'd use the building. It's been determined that we do need to put that in, I think, you know, set a good standard. You know, it's a good practice for us, so we are recommending the award of this. We did get the competitive prices, and so we feel comfortable with the dollar amount, and ask your consideration to proceed with that award.
Okay, is the council -- any questions or comment on this item?
I do. Mayor? Yeah.
Councilmember Owens?
Yeah, going to this, you know, we found out early on in value engineering that we didn't have to put the sprinkler system in for the building, as it was. And then we add an open air, which pushes it over to the top. Why did we do that? I mean, really, if it's open air, I mean, if we didn't connect it to the other part of the facility, then we didn't have to come in and pay the additional money to come in and sprinkle an open air. And I hadn't seen a picture of what the open air facility looks like.
So I think Robert up to me the best position to answer, he's been working with that, so.
Councilmember Owen, I also may pull in a little bit of my staff, too, because part of that was also been negotiated. But when you start adding a pavilion, taking a look at that, then when the fire marshal came back and looked, and we pulled our final permit for construction with the contractor pulling that permit, the determination also included occupancy. So that also then pushed that occupancy up in that neck of the woods, requiring the addition of that sprinkler system. So that added to it, and...
Yeah, but if you didn't connect the two buildings together, you wouldn't have to sprinkle.
I'm so sorry.
I said, if you add, if you didn't add the two facilities together, the open air and then enclosed building, then you wouldn't have to sprinkle it.
The fire code doesn't distinguish, as my understanding, and I know I'm gonna be stepping kind of a little bit out of my familiarity territory on that, without having the fire marshal here. But when you start looking at the fire code, my understanding is, it takes a look at occupancy, and takes a look at structures, and proximity, so having two separate, as you're calling spaces between, they look at the whole facility.
So, let me give you an example, then, with Ronnie Killen's place over there at the barbecue. So would he have to sprinkle the outside facility he's got, or should he?
Yeah. I will have to defer that. I will need to check, but I will defer that to determination by the fire marshal.
Well, I just see that we spent time and effort, and I'm assuming money, to come in value engineering and show that we didn't have to sprinkle, you know, sprinkle that area. But then when we connected the open air facility, then that pushed it over to the top, as doing that. And I'm just wondering why we did that, to pay the extra dollars, to do that, when it really is not called within the ordinance on this thing?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite pick that up, council member. I didn't hear you on that.
No, as far as I know, it's not part of the ordinance or the permitting, if it's not connected, the open air facility, that you don't have to sprinkle that.
And to respond is that I'm gonna have to defer back to the fire code, and that's what the fire marshal has been making the determination associated with that.
Okay, and just a couple of questions. Other than that, I'd like to see that before I vote on this. But FFNE, what we're paying, what's a contractor, you know, producing for 50,000? What is that?
FFNE, FFNE, what's 50,000?
The FFNE is outside of the contractor's contract. That's just part of the budget, and shown in there is FFNE, and that will be the furniture fixtures and equipment that we purchase separate from the contract to outfit the building. Yeah.
Okay, but it didn't look like it was separate by showing it here on this. That and I guess the signage would be the same thing, the 30,000 with signage.
That's correct, and the reason it's shown here is this shows the entire budget from day one through the completion of the project.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to hold off on approving this till we find out something on that, on the sprinkler system, because I think if nothing else, we're setting a presence of anything else in the community, whether it's open air or if it's closed, then they should have to sprinkle it.
And then, councilmember Owen, I'm gonna also state that it's gonna be based off an occupancy rating as well. And so if that occupancy rating is above a certain standard or certain number, then it's gonna be required, what, in light of the whole object, the whole facility.
Yeah.
So, and I'm gonna say that's probably gonna be the driving factor, is the occupancy loading of the...
Well, we do that within the rest of our open air facilities, like in the parking stuff, should be sprinkled as well, if we're using that document. I mean, I'm just questioning it, because whatever we do here is probably gonna trend in the, you know, in the future, too, on everything else. And I don't think what we have in there currently says that we have to sprinkle an open air system, or facility.
And Mayor, if I can chime in, I would agree, because reading the staff's write-up, it says, "With discussion with the fire marshal and at the request of the Parks and Rec Department," so that mean, that makes me believe that it might not be specifically required by the fire marshal's office, but we wanna put it in there. So I would also like some clarity on that. And I guess also, you know, back when we approved this in October, I believe the Parks Foundation, or the Park Donation Fund, had to kick over close to a half million dollars, because we're over budget. And now we're coming in with an additional 90K. So when you go back and you look at the numbers, it looks, you know, I was kinda scratching my head for a little bit, but, but we've, I guess, since then amended the budget to increase this project with COs, so that now it looks like we're under budget, but we're really not. I'd remind you, we had to bring in 400, 480, almost 500,000 from the other fund, just to get the first bid covered, and now we're adding some more. So I definitely like to look into this further before I feel comfortable approving it.
Yeah. This particular facility, I think, is gonna attract a number of children. It's an environmental study group, and I think if you're, whether the code says we need a fire suppression equipment in there, I think we need to put it in, because we're protecting a bunch of young children who sometimes have trouble getting out of buildings when there's a lot of confusion like that. So I think it's, I don't see that spending this amount of money is a bad thing to do. I think it's a very positive thing to do with the type of environment that will attract the type of children and the type of people to come in. And I think it's, I think council needs to recognize that we have that responsibility to take care of our citizens.
Mayor, I agree with that, but I believe this is open air, so there's not even walls.
Yeah, this is open air, huh?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, seeing as the fire marshal's unable to attend tonight, to get his input.
Second.
Okay. Any other motion there on that? We have a motion to table, is there any, we have a motion and a second. Does the council have, what's the council's vote on this?
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Postponed.
Oh, postponed, aye.[1139.13][1139.13](laughter) Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item has been postponed.
Did you get enough votes?
Yes, sir, seven to zero.
Okay. No items removed from the, item B was removed from consent agenda and has been disposed of. Moving to item eight, which is new business. Councilmember Moore, would you present item number, new business item number one for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1554, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. City has a section in our Unified Development Code that provides for public school facilities and requirements that they're bound to. When the Pearland ISD had their most recent, 2016, bond program, they approached us about expanding some of the deferments of the requirements. These aren't complete waivers, these are temporary deferments, given some of their situations for the remodelings that they have specifically. And so they've been working through Community Development Director McDonald, and come together with a package that is before you tonight, that would, you know, sort of meet them halfway and recognize where they're at, and what development requirements that would be applicable to their project.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further comment from council? Staff report. Carrie Dunn, we have a motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
I think, I think we won't have to, I apologize, I didn't have a chance to chime in. I did have one, I wanted to add on this, Mayor, I apologize. Counselor, he wants, he has one comment, go ahead. Okay. I did wanna talk about this a little bit, because I had some, I had some conversations with staff, and I had some conversations with some of the trustees, and I have a lot of concerns about us granting this, mostly because the school district's just asking us to treat them different than we do everybody else, to include ourselves. We follow our own zoning criteria, we plat, we provide parking, we provide the landscaping, that we don't provide ourselves special exceptions, and we're taxpayer-funded, similar to the ISD. More importantly, the other school district, the other major school district in our area has never asked for a waiver, or has never asked for us to grant a variance for any of their requirements. You know, I'm a little, I'm, I have a little bit of disappointment in that, but I don't see, include, or don't see in this package is a resolution from the school board asking this of us. And my discussions with some of the school board members, they didn't even know that this was coming for us. So I have a tough time voting for something that is a complete and total waiver of some significant components of our criteria, that I think, to be honest with you, are very easy to comply with, where the consultants hired, they got out ahead of it and made sure that these criteria were met. So, I mean, I don't feel like it's appropriate for us to vote on this without some sort of resolution from the school board requesting this of us.
Okay, any other question or comment from council?
So are you making a recommendation to table this?
Well, I agree with Councilman Perez. You know, when you look at it, there's no specifics as to what exactly it is. They, I mean, they say, you know, renovation, remodeling, expansion, but we are making amends for the school district, and there's nothing, nothing in there from them specifically. So I guess what Councilman Moore was asking is, would you, would you recommend that we postpone, or? I personally don't feel like we should treat anybody significantly different than we treat everybody else. I don't, I don't think we should postpone. I think I feel firm, and my answer is gonna be a no, that these zoning requirements are applied throughout the city for everybody to follow. The other school district has no problem following it. I don't see any reason whatsoever why we should treat this organization differently than we treat ourselves, than we treat everybody else, every mom and pop that has to develop. We would never tell a mom and pop they're not required to plat. We would never tell them they don't have to meet the minimum parking requirements, regardless of the financial impact. In fact, we tell them monetary consideration cannot be a hardship. So essentially, what we're being asked is to ignore those precedents, ignore that criteria for the benefit of a school district. As much as I want these schools to be built and be built quickly, the things that you're asked, the things that are being asked for to be waived should have been considered in the preliminary planning of the building. The plat should have already been submitted and applied for, and probably recorded at this point. For some of these buildings that are existing, that should have already had plats to begin with, and the parking requirements and landscape requirements, those are minimum requirements. And I don't see a benefit or a value for us to waive those. So I'm not asking for a postponement. I'm just disappointed that this request is not coming from the school board.
Okay. Did you have a comment from council?
I have one more comment. Is there any negative financial impact to not approving this?
I mean, in terms of the city's perspective? No, it's more about the development and those criterias, it'd be the, you know, whether we wanna hold this, these additions to the same standards we would the rest of any other development in town, so. So the city wouldn't be out money, if that's, if I understand correctly.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be fair, I believe there's a rep from the school district here, and John McDonald's worked on this closer than I have, if you have any question, I think you understand it, but just wanna make sure it's pointed out.
I mean, I guess, I'd ask if the, the school district representative would like to comment, and give them the opportunity.
Thank you. My name's John Posh. I'm the director of bond construction for the district, so I'm a district employee. This started several months ago, when we looked at the UDC requirement impact on our projects, and to comply with everything was, was well over a million dollars. So we looked at... of their requirements. You know, I'm, I'm a little, I'm, I have a little bit of disappointment in that, but I don't see, include, or don't see in this package is a resolution from the school board asking, asking this of us, and my discussions with some of the school board members, they didn't even know that this was coming for us. So, I have a tough time voting for something that is a complete and total waiver of some significant components of our criteria, that I think, to be honest with you, are very easy to comply with, were the consultants hired, they got out ahead of it and made sure that these, these, these criteria were met. So, I mean, I, I don't feel like it's appropriate for us to, to vote on this without some sort of resolution from the school board requesting this of us.
Okay. Any other question or comment from council?
So, you making a recommendation to table this?
I, well, I, I, I agree with Councilman Perez. You know, when, when you, you look at it, there's no specifics as to what exactly it is. They, I mean, they say, you know, renovation, remodeling, expansion, but, but we are making amends for, for the school district, and, and there's nothing, nothing in there from them specifically. So, I, I guess what Councilman Moore was asking is, would you, were you recommending that we postpone, or?
I, I personally don't feel like we should treat anybody significantly different than we treat everybody else. I, I don't, I don't think we should postpone. I think I feel firm, and, and my answer is gonna be a no, that these zoning requirements are applied throughout the city for everybody to follow. The other school district has no problem following it. I don't see any reason whatsoever why we should treat this organization differently than we treat ourselves, than we treat everybody else, every mom and pop that has to develop. We would never tell a mom and pop, they're don't, they're not required to plat. We would never tell them they don't have to meet the minimum parking requirement, regardless of the financial impact. In fact, we tell them monetary consideration cannot be a hardship. So, essentially, what we're being asked is to ignore those precedents, ignore that criteria for the benefit of a school district. As much as I want these schools to, to be built and be built quickly, the, the things that you're asked, the things that are being asked for to be waived should have been considered in the preliminary planning of the building. The plat should have already been submitted and applied for, and probably recorded by, at this point. For some of these buildings that are existing, they should have already had plats to begin with, and the parking requirements and landscape requirements, those are minimum requirements, and I don't see a benefit or a value for us to waive those. So, I, I'm not asking for a postponement. I'm just disappointed that this request is not coming from the school board.
Okay. Any other comment from council?
I have one more comment. Is, is there any negative financial impact to not approving this?
I mean, in terms of the city's perspective? No, it's more about the development and those criterias. It'd be the, you know, whether we wanna hold this, these additions to the same standards we would the rest of any other development in town, so. So, the city wouldn't be out money, if that's, if I understand correctly.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be fair, I believe there's a rep from the school district here, and John McDonald's worked on this closer than I have. If you had any question, I think you understand it, but just wanna make sure it's pointed out.
I mean, I guess, I, I'd ask if the, the school district representative would like to comment, and give him the opportunity.
Thank you. My name's John Posh. I'm the Director of Bond Construction for the district, so I'm a district employee. This, this started several months ago, when we looked at the UDC requirement impact on our projects, and to comply with everything was, was well over a million dollars. So, we looked at sites like Pearland High School, Turner High School, to redo sidewalks, you know, street trees, landscape buffers. To create all this was, was quite an expense. So, that was our initial question, when we had our pre-development meetings with, with your staff, whether we could, you know, either defer some of these things, or whether we had to fully incorporate things, for example, changing out sidewalks that were already existing. So, that's kind of how the, the conversation started. It was quite a big financial impact on the bond. So, over a period of several months of discussions, some of these, and, and as we completed the design and got the bids back, some of these things, we've already incorporated. So, for example, at a couple of the campuses, it was fairly easy for us to comply with some of these, like additional parking and, and things like that. Your staff did require that we do all the street trees, so at Pearland High School, Turner High School, things, schools even that have large tree, uh, street frontages, we are doing all the street trees. So, really, the, the only things that were left to defer ended up in this final document are landscape buffers. So, for example, at Turner High School, it's a fairly, very large site, and there's quite a bit of money worth of landscape buffers to go around all the ends of the parking spaces. So, it ended up that things like that were incorporated, and what the, I guess, kind of the compromise that we worked out with your staff was that we could defer those things. We still have to ultimately do it, but they could be incorporated just into the next bond, or, you know, within the next 10 years, whichever is, is sooner. So, it was worked on an administrative level with the school district. All are, on the administrative side, all were involved up to the superintendent. It is true that the board was not involved, and if that's a requirement of y'all, I, I guess I can certainly understand that, and so that's, that's how we got to where we are.
Okay, any questions? I appreciate your comments, and give us the background of the issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does council have any question? That's, apparently, we're trying to get a school opened, and, and some items that are not our code requirements, but it could be, is it, is it possible we could have those completed in a timely fashion, as soon as there are some vacations and some of the tree planting and things, as we go along, and eventually do all the things that you're passionate about right now? I think that's something we need to look at. Any further comment from council?
Mayor, I guess I'd, I'd have to agree with Councilman Perez, and it, it's tough. Essentially, we've got the school district coming to us and saying the same thing I've heard from small businesses trying to develop in the city, and we're just ready to hand out a waiver. I, I think as of tonight, I'd have to no vote. I'd like to get the, the formal recommendation from the, the school board trustees, and if, and when and if this does come back, if, kinda like a zoning case, if we could have some slides showing us what exactly the waivers are and what this looks like, 'cause some of this, I, I read makes sense with the expansion of 518. So, I, I can probably get comfortable with a few of these items, but just the, kinda how it's presented tonight, without the, the school board's approval, I'd, I'd be tempted to, to vote, vote no or postpone.
With the idea it's eventually be done.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Second, motion to postpone. Have motion second. Mr. Secretary, we have a motion second on the, postpone the motion.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
We're at three, three. Three to three.
Three, three. Okay. I, I think we ought to postpone. So, be no.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I, I agree to postpone, but yes.
Four to three. Did I read right? Four to three with Councilmember Ordno absent from the chambers.
Councilmember Reed, number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading of board is number 1497-5. So moved.
Second.
And then also, I, I think the air conditions, air conditioning units are making a lot of noise, and some people in the back can't hear, so we can speak up.
Very good. We have a motion second on the floor. Council, staff report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council. We've, as we've talked about, always looking at the school zones, and particularly Alvin ISD dynamic with not only expansions, but brand-new schools. So, we've, as promised, I believe in December, went back and, uh, wanna upgrade and, and some of the areas to harmonize the times with the actual school start times, and actually extend the zone. So, recommend this for your consideration, so we can formally enforce this.
Council, any question or comment on this item? Council?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for their work with, with the district on this. I know I had some choice words, and definitely wanna, wanna thank staff and engineering, Robert specifically, for, for pushing this forward.
Any other question?
I just got one on here, not really a question, but I think, you know, everything that we've gone through on this and school and all of that, I think we should draft letters to send out between us and AISD.
Can you speak into the microphone? I, I can't even hear you down here, so I know that can't.
Oh, okay. Okay, how about this? No, I just think that Alvin School District and the city of Pearland needs to draft up a joint letter on the change that's gonna be done, and actually send it out to the parents of the kids that go with us, so they know what has been done, since this has been really brought to our attention, and Councilman Derek down there has said quite a bit responding to this. So, I think they need to know directly what has been done to hopefully alleviate those problems.
Okay. Any other question or comment?
Uh, one other, one other, Mr. Mayor. Not a comment on this, but maybe just procedurally in the future. You know, we typically get these later in the summer, right before school's about to start, so maybe we get, we start looking at the school zone adjustments in, in May. Gives us some time in council, and for staff to adjust any things that, anything that we may wanna modify, without having to rush to meet the deadline.
Probably have to be in March, February.
I, I push it up as early as I want.
I'm just saying, I, I think we start in May, currently.
No, we, we approve, we approve the last two late, late in the summer.
Right. Three months by the time staff does their work.
Well, it just gives us an op, gives us more of an opportunity to look at it, and maybe for us as a council to have some community outreach, and discuss some areas where we may need some more information, and adjust to it prior to the new school year. And I think staff would be okay with that.
Absolutely. Just kinda to clarify what we've done in the past, we ha, we have kinda started in, right after school finishes, worked with them through the summer, and then it comes right before school starts, and Roberts already made the suggestion and talked to the school districts about starting that process earlier, May timeframe this year, so we can get, get everything addressed, and make sure everybody's on the same page by, by the time we adopt it. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any other question, council? Comment? Here you go, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Moving item three on the agenda. Councilmember Ordno?
Yes, I'm gonna defer the reading to legal.
Uh, councilmembers, first of all, this is, again, before I read it into the record, an item for an eminent domain matter. It is a friendly eminent domain matter, in which we've already agreed to a price with the party, but we're having to do this to acquire a clear title to the property. And, so I'll go ahead and read this into the record. Recommend a, a motion of the council for consideration, possible action regarding resolution number 2018-23. Resolution of the City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire a fee simple title to certain property for the FM 518 Turn Lane Project, FM 518 at State Highway 288, being a 0.0351 acre, 1,530 square feet parcel of land out of the John M. Maxey Survey Abstract, number 675, Breaux County, Texas, and being out of that certain called 1.1810 acre track conveyed to JP Morgan Chase Bank from that, the crossing at 288 Shopping Center. LTD by deed executed June 16th, 2003, recorded under Breaux County Clerk's file number 03037078 of the Official Public Records of Breaux County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of road improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his designee and any other city officials to take such actions or necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and a second. And staff report?
Nothing to add, sir. I think Mr. Coker mentioned why we're doing this, and the requirement to go this route.
And this property is located at the northeast corner of State Highway 288 in FM 518.
I think that's a good move, because trying to make it, that, that gives us an extra lane, turn lane in there, and we need those all over town. So, the more you can put in, the more, better off we are traffic-wise. Council, staff, staff report. Does council have any question or comment on that?
I'm, I'm just glad to see that we're getting to this. I've always thought we needed an extra turn lane there on, going northbound on 288, so I'm glad to see it finally starting to happen.
That's good, super. Any other question, comment? Here are none. We have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2018-22. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Secretary, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has an existing development agreement with Denbury. Basically, this is in the southeast part of town, along State Highway 35, and the agreement provides that Denbury will pay, in lieu of tax payments, amounts that are determined based upon values to the city, and in exchange, the city won't incorporate that property. We could go forward on the annexation, because we have this development agreement, the, the annexation laws, which council's familiar with, don't apply, but in any case, at, at this point, it's, you know, sort of maintain the status quo. We'd suggest that we extend this for one more year, see kinda things how play out. Denbury's agreeable to this, and same terms as we've had. So, wanna extend this for one year before it expires at the end of the month.
Okay. Council, any question or comment on this item?
No.
This is sort of, we've, we've done this before, and I think this is a repeat of some actions we've taken similar to this in the past.
I believe so, yes, sir.
And it's, I think it's a good move on our part. Any other question or comment? Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
I didn't have time to get the question yet. All right, I'll go. Yes.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number nine. Mayor, council issues for future council agendas. Anybody got any future items or agendas?
Mayor, I don't have an item for a future agenda, but I just wanna take the opportunity in public session to commend staff for the effort they put in this last weekend, with the water line that went down over in the west side, in, in freezing conditions out there, working on the water line. Anybody who's worked, worked cold, wet, and freezing knows how difficult and miserating that is. So, Eric, to your staff, please, please pass my appreciation for all the effort they did restoring water so quickly.
We had a bunch of cool employees, I tell you. For sure. Any other comment before we wrap up? Other business? None? Agenda? Yes. We adjourned at 7:25.